Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Donna should be joining by phone.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm going after today's meeting, what I'm gonna do is reload my Teams app on my computer. I'm gonna delete the current version that I have for some reason. I can see you all and you can see me, but I can't link to the video. I mean, to the... Are you all there or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So again, apologies for all the technical issues and the time is 10:05. So let's call the meeting to order and roll call all the board members present, please. Do I... or does somebody do that? I should ask that question.
Usually the chair does that.
Oh, okay. Um, I know that Thomas A. Horn is here.
Yep.
Is anybody else from the board here? Because I can't see.
Lauren Gauthier.
Okay. Anyone else?
Lauren Gauthier is here.
Thank you, Lauren. Donna Carnes was just admitted.
Hello?
Can you hear us? Good morning, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I'm doing this from the road. So can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good morning and welcome.
Morning.
I think that's all we have.
That's all we have? Okay. So moving on to the second agenda item, um, that I asked for a motion to approve the minutes from the December 5th, 2024 meeting.
Done, moved.
Don't run for that second. Thank you. Any discussion? Can we please vote on it? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I abstain as I was not present for that meeting.
Yeah, I will also abstain, Tom Oneman.
And if I can for a moment here, um, as most of you know, I am new to the board. I just recently came on. First and foremost, um, I think that we owe Lauren Gauthier a great gratitude for all the work that she's done on the Audit Committee over the years. And, um, I, you know, really, really gonna lean on you if I have questions. And I'm just trying to give you a moment if you wanted to say something. But I, and I think the organization should thank you for your leadership that you have done on the commission.
Thank you, Bob.
Alrighty. Alright, so let's go to the status of audits and do completed audits. The Office of Policy and Management. Who wishes to speak on that?
I have some comments, but I'll let others go first.
Okay.
If Tom or Donna have anything.
Yep, I guess.
No, I did not.
Yeah, so I guess my first question. Yeah, thank you. My first question, so I just want to understand, um, there's been a change to this cover page, um, Audit for Office and Policy and Management to be included in the State Contracting Standard Board Triennial Audit Compliance Report. Is my understanding that this is not going to be issued as a standalone and it's just gonna be like stapled to the back of our next triennial report? What is the purpose of this statement is my question?
You, I, for me, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, can you repeat that? Because are you referring to the first page that I have on the screen?
Yep, this statement down at the bottom is different than the last version I saw. I'm just wondering what the purpose of it is.
Well, um, I don't know if you recall, we had a discussion via email where we had sent you the draft of what was, um, the previous one. And then when I sent you this one, you had agreed on this one, I believe. This was the last one that we had all agreed on. Is there a change that you want to make?
Yeah, I don't remember agreeing. No, I don't remember agreeing to this. The last comment, I believe, that you said was that you were just taking the names off the front. My comment on this is, it almost seems like this is not going to be standalone issued, but rather it's just going to be incorporated in a later document that we'll be writing. Is that not correct?
So, so I think the question becomes that this is not going to be a standalone audit, but be part of a larger audit that the committee or that the board is going to produce at a later date. Is that in fact the case or not the case? So, okay, so since the silence, I'm going to take the...
I'm sorry, I was...
Go ahead.
This is part of, this is one of the many audits, uh, that are conducted as part of the triennial audits. So this is among the audits that we do for the triennial audit. So we pick certain number of audits that we do, and this is just one of the many of the audit. So this, this is, so the format of the audits is, is, uh, should be consistent throughout the, uh, the process. When Lauren reviewed this, um, she had some concerns about the cover page of the audits, of the, of the audit. And so Maritza was trying to accommodate Lauren's concerns, even though this was, uh, um, this was the cover page used in prior audits, tria- audits from the, uh, tria- triennial audits. Now, the whole committee hadn't weighed in on that, but, um, Lauren was chair and Maritz was trying to accommodate her request. So, uh, that, that was the situation.
So from what I understand, all I had mentioned was that you needed to include the chair of the board's name. That's all I was looking for. I'll go back and I'll see if this statement is actually consistent with all of the previous reports. But regardless, my point is, it, it brings the question, is it a standalone document? Which I think it should be, right? We have been issuing these, these audits as standalone agency audits and then doing a comprehensive kind of look back. So I just, that was my only point on that first, on that first cover page. It, it raises a question. If you don't want to clarify it, fine.
No, no, I think we're trying to clarify. No, hold on, Lauren. Let's, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna take these one at a time, right? Because that way, what would you want seen? What would you want seen as part of the statement? You want it just standalone? Because I'm, I'm looking at the audit, right? And I'm trying to figure out, is it, is the issue the triennial audit compliance report for 24, 25, and 26?
No, no. The, it says it's included as part of, right? In my mind, that makes me think that this will be included in a larger report.
If I may, I think that on the fourth line, if you just make the word reports or report plural, change it to reports. So it's included in the state contracting standards boards, you know, overall reports. I think that makes it clearer, because really it's just...
I appreciate that, Tom. Yeah.
Yeah, just, just plural.
I agree.
Report to reports, and then it's part of the board's overall reports, but it is standalone.
Okay.
And also, and also just to clarify, um, as you guys recall, uh, we are doing a carryover. So this is one of the audits that it's being carryover from 2024 into 2025 and possibly 2026, but we could discuss that later. But that's also why I think we put, we put those days, those years there, just so it could be clarification. I didn't know it was gonna be confusion, um, but I think what Tom had mentioned, I think that'll also clear it out if we just put reports instead of just report.
Yes, fiscal year.
So we have consensus. Let's move on to the next issue.
Yeah. So I understand that there's, um, there were no finding. Oh, do I want to start there? So I, I guess, a general question, right? I keep coming back to, what is our mandate in the statute? What is our purpose? What are we really doing, right? And so I appreciate that you added the date of the time of selection, May 8th, 2023. I guess my concern is how are we doing audits on contracts that are not finished and were not finished at the time of selection? Because remember, a big part of our mandate is doing that results-based accountability piece of it. And we can't really do that if the contract's not over. For instance, like they're the contractor performance evaluation, right? That's one of the things that we test for. You can't test for it because the contract's not over, so they haven't done their evaluation yet. But then we're submitting this report before the contract is over. So how can we say that there is or is not a finding on an action that hasn't been completed yet and shouldn't have been completed yet because the contract's not over? So... Not saying that we have to change anything with this particular report, but I think it's important to only be looking at contracts that finished in the fiscal year that we're testing. Because the, the triennial, the triennial cycle, yes, is three fiscal years, but the audit itself, I had always understood, or I think it'd be clearer, is to do it in a single fiscal year. So you have a complete bounding of your audit.
Yeah, I mean, don't we have certain benchmarks in contracts that have to be checked? I mean, aren't there checkpoints within a contract when a contract is running, you know, multiple months, multiple years? Aren't there certain benchmarks where they're gonna evaluate how they're performing and what's going on? So I would think, I would think that...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that if, if there was a contract ongoing, we have to take a look at, you know, what the watershed events are or what the, you know, the, the benchmarks are and how the contract is being reviewed by the agency. You know, what kind of evaluation are they doing ongoing? I mean, I think that's just as important as the final evaluation. Right, and I'll echo that, uh, Tom. During the life cycle of any contract, uh, there are different benchmarks and different criteria that you're evaluating for compliance. So if you're talking about, um, the beginning psych, uh, the, the RFP process or during the execution or implementation of the contract or, or at the end, um, evaluating, um, whether or not the vendor has met certain benchmarks and whether or not the state should, um, contract with that vendor again. It, it, it varies. So I think you're right, um, when to or if we should be evaluating that, um, the contract, the contractor or the relationship at any point. It's our duty throughout that process to be making evaluations and for compliance. So I, I, I don't, um, I, I, I agree with you.
So my point is that there is a specific statutory requirement to have a contractor performance evaluation at the end of the contract. And I don't see how we are statutorily auditing that if the contract's not ended.
I, I don't think we, we are, I don't think we're, uh, somehow disagreeing with you. I don't, I don't think that, I think that that's a compliance criti- criteria that either we add, uh, but I don't think that we, um, have to omit one over the other. So I don't, I don't think that's an issue.
I, I think my... Yeah, my point is, I understand that there's interim evaluations throughout a contract life. That's a common practice. The point is the statute and the standard to which we're auditing is the end of contract contractor performance evaluation. And if the contract's not over, how are we supposed to evaluate that?
I don't think we choose, no, I, I...
May I say something real quick?
Sure.
Because, uh, an, an idea just popped into my head and I would like to bring this up. So to solve the issue of contracts, I, I got a process question, and this is an overall process question that I've had since I've taken over the committee as far as process of audits are concerned and what is and what is not needed. And so the issue here is, say, for example, um, we do have an open contract and the agency gets audited. Do we have a mechanism to audit the benchmarks as of the date of the audit and then put them in a tickler system to follow up with the agency in six, 12, or 18 months? To then meet the statutory requirement of, um, waiting for the end of the contract?
We, we've, we've already, we've implemented that. That's something that we should be doing. That's something that we are doing. And then we are also following up, um, um, because this is our first time doing a triennial audit. So we also are implementing, um, something, um, a, a process where we, we look at contracts at the end of the life cycle. So I, I don't think we're in disagreement. I, I think, I, but I, I do, unless if we're, if we're deciding to only look at contracts at the end of the, the life cycle, I don't agree with that. I think that there are compliance criteria that we should be looking at throughout the life cycle. Um, I don't think we have to wait until the end of the life cycle of a contract to, um, to evaluate a contract. I don't, I don't...
I, I agree with that, Greg, because in state grants, federal grants, in all contracting, there are gonna be specific benchmarks, either through the end periods of the contract or, um, through the life of the contract that can be established at a picture of time through...
Correct.
Whether or not those benchmarks are going to be ultimately found. The question there is, to Lauren's point, I think, and I'm not speaking for you, so I don't, you know, want that to be misconstrued. How will then we meet our, our legislative and statutory mandate to, to review that at the end life of it? Because I also think, um, it's important since we're going now doing this for the first time, that we do do lessons learned and get a sheet together. You understand? For all of the staff, all of the committee members and everything else as to what we're seeing as things that kind of work, things that don't work and hindrances that we have coming our way.
These are all criteria that, that, that weren't developed by the staff, but by the committee. So what we're evaluating is based on what the committee developed. And so, and so, so these issues that we're, what, what we're doing is, this stuff was presented and vetted by the committee. We, we didn't want, run off in a vacuum and kind of go off and, 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 and do this. So, um, I, I, you know, I, I wanna just be clear that this isn't, these, all of these criterias weren't just sort of done in a vacuum. This was presented, evaluated, and brought to the board. And so...
Yeah, like Greg's saying, this is all from the statute. So it wasn't created in a vacuum, and that's, again, my point. It's all from the statute.
Right, and I think that's the point that we, I think that you're absolutely correct. I think that that's the point that ultimately we all need to get to, you know? What road we traveled to get there? That's what I think we're discussing there, but I don't think there's any disagreement, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Greg.
Yeah, so...
We will not...
Yeah, I, yeah, we're on the same page about, um, the, what, what needs to be done. I think the committee has to determine, um, how we get there. And I think, I think that adding that criteria or how we add that criteria is something that the board has, the committee has to, um, develop. All right, well, I'm completely comfortable with a blend. I mean, we can blend it. We should probably have a mix of finished contracts and contracts in progress. So why don't we just, I mean, we looked at six contracts for this one. How many were in progress and how many were finished?
Yep, correct. And Maritza, you have your hand up?
Yes, um, so I just wanted to, um, clarify the whole, also the contract and performance evaluation. So as you guys recall, we go based on a checklist, right? A compliance checklist. So I just wanted to give you a little background of the way I do the audits. So for example, um, as Tom said, we have six contracts within OPM, right? So for example, the first one, the agreement ended in 2023. They did provide the contract performance evaluation for this particular contract. For the next one, the agreement expires in 2027. They did not provide it because the agreement has not expired yet. So just, I don't know if that's what you guys, what Lauren was trying to clarify. But then for the following one, it ended in March 2025. So what I do is I will go back to the agency since this was done this year. At the time that I was reviewing the contract, it had not expired, right? Um, and I guess that's another question that maybe we can, we can raise. Once we do reach that expiration day like this one that was ended in March 30, March 31, 2025, are we going back to the agency and asking them for that performance evaluation, um, document or not? I did reach out to them, um, and they did provide it. So that's why I, that's why there was no findings. Same case for the next one. Um, and then these was actually, uh, special cases because they were business units award, which is another, another type of, uh, method that we use. But that's just what I wanted to clarify. And if anyone wants to correct me, please feel free to correct me, um, or if there's another question regardless to that, uh, please feel free to ask. But that, that's just what I wanted to, to let you guys know.
So I think, I think the issue now becomes, to your point, Maritza, right? Is the, I think that, um, so we just kind of move forward with this and how I envision it and, and please, I'm asking the board, I'm asking the staff, um, anybody, um... Can we please come up with a way that the staff envisions the audit process going, including the tickler, including the aspect of meeting, um, Lauren's guidelines as to the statutory requirement, um, that is needed? And then Greg, present that to this audit committee?
Sure.
The recommendations and implementation?
Sure.
And this starts the process of formalizing our audit processes?
Sure.
Um, so that it either mirrors the statute. In multi, I, I mean, again, I, I, I'm the new guy, uh, but in my professional life and dealing with, um, appropriated government funds, there were, even though those funds may have been multi-year in, in awarding, there were benchmark reports either due every six months, every year, end of year, to continue to receive that. So there has to be a mechanism for that to do.
I agree. Yeah, I just have a question for Lauren, because I was just reading 4E6, and I don't see where it says it has to be the end of a contract that we do our audit. So is that a cross-reference to other procurement legislation? Or can you clarify that for me?
I'd have to go, yeah, I'd have to go back and look. I don't have the statutes open in front of me. My only, my only pushback on, on that is, yes, good, good to identify whether or not it's interim or end of year. My thought is I, we don't say whether or not the contractor performance evaluation is good or bad or was done correctly. I think our only mandate is to say that it was done. And so my concern being, if there, if it, you know, if we only go with the interim ones, okay? We have to be clear that we're looking at interim ones. But again, what's, what are we checking off? You did a contractor performance valuation at some point, and that's good enough to satisfy the statute. If you think about the purpose of why contractor performance evaluations are necessary, it's so that at the end, in my experience, my professional experience and looking through these statutes and doing these audits, um, for as long as we have, you have it so that you can say this contractor performed, we got the money that we wanted, and it goes back to the results-based accountability that is included in our statutes, right? And that we have to be reporting on. And we should be making regs on, I believe, too. But anyways, contractor performance evaluation, did I get what I asked for, right? Did we get what we wanted out of this public money? And should we use this contractor again? That's the purpose of the contractor performance evaluation. Interims are good to make sure that you're progressing your milestones, right? But at the end of the contract, you have to say yes or no, did we get what we wanted? Did they deliver the report? Did they build the building, whatever it might be, right? That's why I'm more focused on the end of contract one. And yeah, I, I would think that...
But how would you, may I ask a question?
How do you measure that?
Go ahead, Tom.
How do you measure whether or not it got done at the end of the contract? Did you do your contractor performance evaluation?
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the measuring that qualitative aspect of that. Are you suggesting, because I, you can, you can ask the question, but I, 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 I get nervous when we, if, when we start teetering into the qualitative, uh, aspect of that because that's a question for the, the agency, um, to evaluate.
Right, and, yeah, and their evaluation is supposed to be that contractor performance evaluation.
Correct.
And we as a, as a board are supposed to be coming up with regulations around results-based accountability. That is the qualitative aspect that we are mandated to develop.
We're, we're nowhere near that. Yeah, what, which haven't been created yet, yes.
Right.
Right. I'm, I'm just, I mean, we're looking at a broader framework for where we want to go. That is something to always keep on the horizon. It's not just, did you get a report? Did the report answer the question, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, but we, we, we've gotta, you know, crawl before we walk a little bit.
And that's what I think, I think also, again, pardon me because I'm on a delay, uh, if I'm cutting anybody off. We are, we're, we're, I think that the process that you're envisioning, um, Lauren, is the process that we need to go to and we should be going to, and that's what we should be striving to. Currently, uh, again, my opinion, could be wrong, could be right, whatever. There's a hot... Um, there's a hodgepodge of procedure and policy. Um, I would like to start from the beginning, um, with the staff's recommendation as they are going to be doing the audits as to how they would like to see the process. Give them the ability then to present the processes to the board, keeping in mind all of our concerns throughout any of the processes. And we're collaborative to come up with the ultimate goal of doing that. Because my question to you, Lauren, would be if I, if all of a sudden we pick an agency, the contract is still not completed. Right? Currently now, as we stand, we would not look at that contract. So then how do we follow up on that specific finding of our audit?
Well, if you don't look at the contract, you wouldn't have any findings on that contract. And you would catch that contract when you come back in three years and do that audit again on that agency. When it is complete.
Right. But how about in current contract?
What do you mean?
Current contract, a current contract, this fiscal year.
The ones, the ones that we have already tested?
No. How would you test a current contract that's not completed during the audit process?
I wouldn't. I wouldn't.
I think the point. You know?
Okay. And may I?
Donna, were you saying something?
Yeah, but it, I just, it seems like a catch-22, that's all. You know, because you gotta wait till the end, but you need to know in the beginning or, you know, what's going on. But we're really just on it in the agencies if they're doing their job, correct? I, I don't know. I'm a little lost. I'm kind of new to this committee because it was a long time ago that I actually with Al, um, over, you know, and then, I don't know, I'm just going to listen more and speak less. Keep going.
All right. Well, I, I mean, it, it clearly says that in conducting each such audit, the board shall have access to all contracting and procurement records, may interview any and all personnel responsible for contracting, contract negotiations or procurement and blah, blah, blah. So that all happens at the beginning of the contract. And I think the scope of the contract is probably, you know, where most contracts go wrong is in the scope. But I, you know, I understand the need for, you know, checking these contracts as they progress. So I would think the beginning is very important. What happens during the life of the contract is very important. And then at the end, but I wouldn't want to just go in at the end for all of them. I think it's got to be a blend. I don't mind going in at the end, but we still have to be able to interview personnel that were responsible for it. We still need to get the procurement records. So we do have to dial back and go back to the beginning of the contract. And I don't want to lose that knowledge, the history, whatever it is, you know, even the personnel that were involved in that. Because some of these contracts are two years long. We may not have the same personnel in that agency. So I, I, I think doing the ongoing makes sense, doing the end game makes sense. I think we got to put some regulations in place for how we want to sort of benchmark certain contracts and do, you know, in-progress reviews of contractor performance, agency performance, are they reviewing what they should be reviewing? Are they, you know, watching the contractor as closely as they should? And these are all important features that we should be commenting on.
I completely agree. So, um, can we, can we agree on this? Um, Greg, can we get some processes together, taking everyone's recommendations and everyone's concerns as, as we met today? And come back, uh, possibly, I, um, it's looking like we won't be meeting in August, but we could if people wanted to. Um, but I think that it's time that these processes, as far as what regulation is concerned, what we're responsible for and how the process moves, um, through the contracting pieces. Um, and I ask you to work with Aaron on that so that you guys can both review statute as, as, uh, as that goes, goes forward. Anybody have a problem with that or concern, comment?
No, I think that's a great idea, Bob. And, you know, I also wanted to add that I agree with Lauren and, and with regard to the in-progress should be noted. And I know we have expiration dates and termination dates on the contract, but in the body of our report, we don't say this contract is sixty percent done or this contract is eighty percent done. So maybe we ought to, you know, just dig into them a little bit more just to find out what percentage of the contract is completed to date? Or as of the date of our audit?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's within our purview to start doing EVM on them, Tom. Um, but I, I mean, I appreciate that they, no, I, I, I understand what you're saying and I agree to the extent that it's, it's a little light in what we actually do know about these contracts. I mean, we have the blurb, so I'm going to pivot the conversation. I think we're all in agreement on where we want to go in terms of the blending and, and the, the progressing. I don't know if it, if it makes a lot of sense to say it's sixty percent done or, or whatever else. I do think it makes sense though to say, you know, this contract is, is open. We were able to test this, this, this and the other, right? Like we were able to test the RFP process. We were able to test, um, this part, the supplier, um, selection process, whatever. I, I just think if we're, we're creating a document for the public and for the legislature to review, this document, this OPM report doesn't tell them what we actually looked at besides the statement of work. And so I don't know if this is, um, like just another page where we kind of run through, this is what we're able to check, um, or if it's put under each individual contract, what was actually able to, to be produced and to be able to be, to be reviewed. Um, I think that that would add a lot more, uh, information, helpful information. Because otherwise people are going to say, kind of what I just said, right, is well, you have no findings, but the contract's not over. So what did you actually look at? You know, they're not going to look at this in conjunction with our audit instrument. So they don't know actually what we're testing. And a lot of times the only thing, the only way you do know that something's being tested is when there's a finding that comes out. In this case, there's no findings, which great, good job, OPM, but what did we actually test?
May I?
So I, I would make the recommendation to add that, that kind of color to the contract or to the, to the report.
Maybe, and may I suggest, make a suggestion, or maybe we can or cannot do this, but maybe we can, I internally, we can talk about this. Would it be possible? And, and I'll talk to the, the, the staff internally to see if we can do this. If we can frame things or maybe even set it up so that we frame it in phases, so like, um, the, the, um, maybe even have include some of the, the findings in phases. Um, I'm just trying to think out loud, like, if we can, let me think this through a little bit.
And again, I'm sorry to interrupt, right? Um, but I think that's what we have to, we have to allow this to kind of percolate a little bit amongst ourselves.
Yeah, let me think this through.
Right. And that's why I think, um, the process needs to be formalized and the requirements need to be clearly established so that, um, everybody knows what the rules are. And that, um, how we get there should be a collaborative method between this committee, this board and the staff to get to where we need to get to. So I think that moving forward, um, these questions, um, are good, but I think for right now, so that we can move it along and everybody can, um, continue to enjoy the day. Uh, what I'm asking is that, that we, we start putting some mind to thought. Aaron, get with Greg as well, um, look at the law requirements, the, the statutory requirements. Um, and, and then, and then let's proceed with this conversation the next time you meet, um, as we go forward.
Sounds good.
Anybody have a problem with that from the committee or?
No, no, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I just don't understand. Um, are we done talking about the OPM report? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, 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 no. I just, I, as far as what the process is moving forward on these audits and stuff, I think everybody's concerns have been voiced and I think we need to move forward from that, but we can continue on the OPM report.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is this going to be elevated? Uh, is this going to be elevated to the board? Yes, I think we have to move it along. It's not perfect, but I think we have to move it along. Did you have something?
I'd like to see a little bit more information about what was actually tested in this before we elevate it.
And you want to put that in the scope of the audit?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, however, however, Maritza wants to, to, um, format it, if she wants to put it in the scope as its own standalone, like explanation of these are the items that we tested and just make it a serial list and pull it off, off of the engagement document. Um, just really broad strokes, right? Or if she wants to put it under each individual contract summary where it says we, this agreement was ongoing, we were able to test X, Y, Z. I, I don't think it's a lot of information, but it's information that actually tells the public and tells the legislature what we're looking at when we go and look at these contracts. Because again, they're not looking at our engagement document. That's not, that's not what's getting issued. So they don't actually know what was tested unless we tell them in this report. Do you see what I mean? Like we had to remember our audience and who we're writing these for.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's best in the scope of the audit and you put it in there and it, it pertains to all the contracts. I think the contracts themselves, you know, sort of speak for themselves. And then in the findings, um, you know, we can basically, if we have any one contract that we have a problem with, we can just bring it out in the findings.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the right way.
Okay. Um, my next comment, and Bob, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear you at the, the meeting on Friday. The, the room audio was terrible and I was in an airport terminal, so I was, I was having a hard time hearing just all around in general. On my question on why OPM received a waiver or gave themselves a waiver, I guess, to have this non-competitive contract on behalf of Yukon, do we have why they did that?
I believe, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Maritza, that you had answered that question, which is what I was, uh, saying was that, uh, Maritza sent out an email uh, with the explanation that Yukon gave to the board concerning why they, they re-awarded that contract.
Re-awarded.
At the end that they, that, I mean, that why they chose that specific person and that they actually saved the money by choosing that specific person.
Well, I'm talking about KeyBank, so not a person, and I don't remember an email from anybody talking about this specific contract and why they received a waiver for it.
Maritza, did you?
This was a consulting report.
Hold on a second.
I mean, she might have sent it to you. I didn't receive it.
Yes. So, um, I did send a response to Bob because again, he's the chair. Um, so when I sent it to him, I think. I think, yeah, you just didn't explain it. No, it was just to you.
Oh, okay. I, then I apologize. If you wouldn't mind, please, can you forward that to the committee?
Sure, sure. I can forward it to them.
And I think it's moving forward. Um, is there a question from board members? Um, send it to the entire committee. The answer should be sent to the entire committee. Not just the chair. So my apologies, Lauren, because I thought the committee got it.
No worries. All right. And then the final note that I have on this, um, Maritza, did you ever get an agency response? Do we need to fill anything in there?
Uh, yeah, so they did respond. Um, I would, do you want me to send that to, to the, well, I guess, Bob, do you want me to send it to the committee too, or?
Yep, send that to the committee as well, please.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it should be in the report, right?
Yeah, I just, I have it on the report. I have it on the report. It's just, I guess I uploaded the wrong one. But I do have it.
I am true believer that more eyes that see a document, the better. Um, so, um, and more information should be, um, sent out to everybody to review. So, um, like I said, Maritza, in the future, moving forward, please, um, just, uh, forward all the questions to everyone on the committee. Your question answers, I'm sorry, to everyone on the committee. Any other else on the OPM report? Lauren, all questions answered?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
All right. Next item on the agenda. I can't see the agenda because it keeps disappearing.
I have it up already.
What is next?
The audits are in process.
Audits in process. Who reports on, on that, please?
Okay, so at the moment, um, so the Department of Social Services and the Department of Administrative Services for IT, those two are being drafted. Um, but being that, um, I know we got ahead of ourselves because that was under new ideas for audits of how we can, we improve the triennial report. Um, so at the moment it was going to be as the OPM, but being that I've received, um, I guess, suggestions of how we can improve it, I might be making those suggestions within this, these reports, if that's okay. Um, and then for the Department of Administrative Services, PSX, those are still working on. Um, as you guys can see from the monthly report, I've done four out of the A, I believe. So that one is continued to be worked on.
Thank you. Any questions? Now, I don't know, and again, Maritza, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm wrong a lot. Um, on the IT contracts, I think this is some of the issue that we're talking about. Some of this stuff, some of these IT contracts go back to the early nineties?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they do.
That are, that are still in place. Um, so we all remember during the, go ahead.
I'm sorry to cut you off. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that we, we did meet with DAS regarding these contracts, Greg, Aaron and I, I believe. We did meet with them. They did submit a response, which again, is going to be included in the report, um, for you, for the committee and the board members, the rest of the board members to review. So once that report is out, I guess you guys can take a look and give me, um, your feedback on that. But at the moment, it is going to be included in there.
All right, great.
I guess my only question is.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, do we have a schedule of when you think you'll be able to, um, issue these reports out? Or like, do I, do we have any kind of plan to, um, close the gap on where we're supposed to be versus where we are? In terms of getting these actually out in front of the board and approved? Is there like a, a schedule or a timetable of how long we think each one would take or should take? And like when we can expect to see them?
Well, okay, so my understanding is once the draft has been completed, right? It's being sent to the committee, correct? So, um, once it's sent to the committee, then it's going to be, um, once you guys agree on the whole report, then it's sent to the board members for them to approve it at the board meeting. So I don't know when our next meeting is going to be, and I guess within that time I can send the dra, the drafted reports. Um, probably sometime next month I can send them over. Um, again, I'm taking in suggestions today to see how I can improve this document, right? Because I think, I, and I, I agree that it does need some changes. Since I've been on, it's been done the way it was done as the former CPO was here, right? Um, the way had John had already, I guess, agreed with you guys, with the committee or the, the rest of the board members. That's how this document has been continuing to be done. Um, so now that we have been meeting, now that we met and we have to make changes, I guess, I don't know, I'm not going to say it's going to take more time, but it's just, I do want to incorporate those suggestions within these reports so that there can always be clarification.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I, I think as, as a committee though, um, and with you guys, right? We, we should come up with some dates, um, that are realistic and achievable, but still, um, help get us, I guess, back on track because here we are entering fiscal year twenty-six get us, I guess, back on track because here we are entering fiscal year twenty-six or a year behind and triennial audit cycle number two, which is, you know, going to be twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that's gonna kick off before we, we know it, right? So I think as a committee and with the staff, we all need to come up with some dates to drive to, um, so that we have kind of something on the horizon to work towards and start hitting those dates in order to, to move the process along. I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about that. But I, I always find it helpful to have like a target date and I know that keeps pushing my work forward.
I have no problem with that. I also agree that target dates are good because if things go into perpetuity, um, very long, but I think again, this is formalizing the process and including it in the overall process documents, um, that, that we all need to start to really start looking at how the process and the formalization of this process moves forward. Any other comments?
Well, I think there's, I just think there's goals and then there's reality. And I know it would be good to have set goals. We wanna get so many agencies reviewed by certain dates. But the reality of it is, certain agencies are much larger than others and they're gonna need more scrutiny. So I think, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm in favor of trying to set a timeline. I just don't, uh, I don't think we have to be slaves to that timeline.
Sure, but I think that it would help, um, committee members, you know. We, we can meet more, you know, time, time allowing with the staff and everything, but it, we don't have to meet once every six months, you know? If we need to be meeting every month or every six weeks, whatever the cadence might be to, to help Maritza move these along, that's what we should be doing, right?
Um, yeah, as I said, I think the goals, you know, should be outlined, that we should be trying to hit those goals and whatever it takes to try to make that happen. Yeah.
As far as, um, mental health and addiction services and the State Department of Education, any comments concerning those?
We're only doing four contracts off of those, is that correct?
Yes, so when, um, Albert was still here, of course, as you guys recall, it was eleven agencies that we're gonna audit, right? But being with the whole time consuming, maybe a one person, um, we had narrowed it down to just doing four of those agencies, um. And again, I know Jim had a question regarding to this, um, which was in the monthly report. I think he was also, I, if I'm, if I can recall, he was asking about why it was only four agencies, um, and that's what I wanted to clarify here, that when we met with Albertaling, that's the, I guess, the set goal that we agreed on. Um, that it would just be four for now, not eleven, um, that will be audited. Because again, we have the carryovers from twenty-twenty-four.
Right, and but in twenty-twenty-five, we would expect to have our processes down and everything and we can hit a more representative sample size. Right?
I think, again, the silence is deafening, uh, as far as what the sample size is, right?
I was just wondering who the question was for.
Yeah, I, I mean, just in general, so I actually, I pulled out Al's last email here with, um, with the schedules and the number of contracts, um, to be selected. So, I understand we're playing catch-up right now. But the year-two contracting.
Well, I hesitate to, personally, I hesitate to, um, to, to set a date or set a, a concrete date when, if the, the, uh, the rules in terms of what the, uh, the criteria and different rules are shifting or changing. So, um, presuming that we establish what they are and we're all clear on what's being evaluated or, and what the criteria are and, and Maritza's, you know, clear about that, because I, I hate to shift in the middle of her working on a, a, a particular, um, audit and then all of a sudden we're shifting again. And she's having to go back and forth with an agency, because one of the challenges she's, she's had, particularly with the last couple of audits, is in the middle of doing the audit, she's had to go back to the agency and shift gears and ask for different things and ask for different, um, and evaluate different criteria, start to shift. And that becomes problematic with the agencies. Um, when you're asking for different things and you're, you're pushing back with the agencies, it really delays the process. So I wanna make sure that we're clear going into these audits and we're consistent going into these audits. We're asking for different materials when we're, we, we establish in that, um, entrance interview, this is what we're auditing, this is what we expect, and on the other end, the exit interview, um, it's a smooth transition and we're, and, and Maritza's able to, uh, make it consistent across the board, because what's happened is that hasn't been the case. And so there's a lot of back and forth between Maritza and the agency. So I wanna make sure that, um, it's clear, because that becomes problematic for her and it only delays the process even further.
I completely agree with that, Greg, and then that's fine. And this, and this goes back to, I think, what we're all talking about, right? I think that, um, to Lauren's concerns, to Tom's concerns, to Mike's concerns, to every Donna's concerns, to all the board members' concerns, you know, um, I think that the formalization of this process is important. I think that conversation absolutely needs to be had, because I also agree with Tom that the quantity of audits is not important, the, the important aspect is the quality of the, of the, of the audit that we're doing and pardon me, and this is not a criticism, this is just Bob Fernandez speaking as he always does. The, the, the process right now is a little helter-skelter and the process is, is not for, uh, totally, uh, hashed out between, um, the staff, the, what's required, and that's why, um, it's very important, um, that as Lauren states, that we meet our statutory requirement. And so that's why I'm asking you, Greg, again, to, let's start formulating some, some, some processes, um, so that we can start moving forward with this.
Yeah, I agree, Bob. Well said, and I, I think they have to be accurate and they have to be reasonable. And, you know, the agencies have to get something out of these audits. That's the whole purpose of doing it. Is, uh, you know, to improve procurement in the state of Connecticut.
Amen.
I disagree to an extent. We're almost two years behind in our program and our mandate is to, on a three-year basis, triennial, audit all of the state agencies, so thirty-six, twelve a year. I think that we do need to start driving towards closure. There's plenty in progress. We can, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I understand the concerns that Greg raised about going back and forth with agencies. But we have four in the, in the shoot right now. Why shouldn't we start looking at those now to help Maritza get closer to being able to elevate up to the board? Like, I, I think we have to have some expectations for ourselves. We need to get these audits done. It's about quality, yes. But also thirty-six agencies over three years. Every three years. That is the program. And we're not meeting that at all. And the longer we delay getting these audits out, the further behind we get. So it has to be useful for the public, it has to be useful for the agencies, but nothing is useful if it's not getting done at all. If we're just turning our wheels, editing and editing and editing.
Okay, so, um, how can we help?
Well, we need to see the reports and then we need to elevate them. That's what I'm saying, is we need to be having these meetings if we need to be giving more input on what we wanted to see. I, I guess, I don't understand what's changed. We haven't met in six months, so I don't know what's changed and why we're only seeing one report. Um, the audit engagement document that goes out to agencies is pretty comprehensive, hits, hits all the marks. Um, in terms of the agencies not actually getting information, Maritza, that's a problem. I think that's something that the board can help exert influence on, right? Um, calling up commissioners or Greg doing it, or if we had a CPO, that'd be real helpful. Um, those are the things that we can do to help drive them co-op, cooperate, I'm saying, with, with the staff, right? But to just keep saying that we need to refine, we need to refine, we need to refine. No, we need to be issuing reports. That's our mandate. Right, I have my legislators ask me what we've done in the past two years. And I point to some of the reports we've put out, but we're not meeting our mandate. How, my question is, what is our plan to get back on schedule to meet our mandate?
I think.
What's the plan?
The response, the res, if the response to your question, the plan to get back on mandate can't be helter-skelter as it was for the previous two years that put us in the situation we find ourselves now. So whatever avoids that is the plan. As far as meeting our legislative mandate, we will not be the first committee nor the last in the state that will be hindering itself. Okay, by the processes that it has not yet established.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's, uh, uh, look, let's just dial it back to where we are, okay? Because, uh, yeah, we got delayed and we lost Jonathan and, you know, everything got spiraled into a, uh, a very slow stagnant mode. But, uh, I think we're, we're fully armed now, except for, you know, CPO. Um, how can we help? What, the audits in progress, Department of Social Services and Administrative Services, IT, PSX, how can we help? How can we help to get these things perfected and elevated to the board?
So as how, as I mentioned earlier, they are drafted. Um, again, I'm if you guys agree for it to stay as it is, or am I incorporating what had Lauren suggested about giving a little bit more detail of what is it that we are auditing, I believe, um, then I'll just have to incorporate that. And then I guess, like I mentioned, I can have it to you guys out sometime next month.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I think in the scope of the audit, we can put some more testing and, and some more definition in there. That, that's easy to do. Um, so yeah, let me, let's, let's sort of perfect the OPM report as we discussed. Uh, along with agency responses, the agency responses, do all agencies have an opportunity to respond to us?
Yes, so when, um, so that's the next step. So once the, the report's drafted, it is sent to the agency, right, for them to submit their comment, um, as to if there is a find-in, submit their comment, if there is no find-in, just to kind of just say, oh, well, we agree that there were no findings, something like that. Um, so then from there is when we meet with the, with you guys, the committee, right? And then from there, you guys agree if it's approved or not, and then it's presented towards the board at a board meeting. That's the thing that I have, yeah.
Okay, and, and how long does that take typically for an agency to review our draft and, and respond?
I mean, as, it depends, because for example, if I send it out today, I don't know, they can respond tomorrow, next week.
Yeah, I mean, but what's, what's normal? What's reasonable? You know, a week, two weeks?
Usually, yeah, a week to two weeks.
All right. All right, so that.
And I usually, I usually, yeah, I usually follow up with them. For example, I'll give them like, uh, three days. Um, depending if it's a weekend, right? Um, I'll give them and then I'll follow up with them, making sure that they did receive it and if they can, please provide the response.
Okay.
Donna has her hands up.
Indeed. Um, I just, here's an idea that I'm thinking. We all know we have a meeting on the third Friday, um, or second Friday of every month. Can we like maybe meet as a committee right after that and discuss stuff? And keep this going, the momentum and working through our issues? Thoughts?
Well, I for one can't do that, Donna. I, I usually have another meeting after the board meeting. I'm already spending, I always, I already spend three quarters of my day in Hartford.
Yeah, I mean, we used to have the meeting before the board meeting. We, right, we used to do nine to ten as our audit meeting and then the regular board meeting at ten.
Correct, yeah, you're, you're going way back. I mean, when I chaired the audit committee, yes, that's what we did. We met before.
And that was, uh, something that I was also speaking with the staff to bring up to the committee of formalizing a specific date, a month that the committee meets. If we meet, we meet. If we don't meet, we don't. But for planning purposes, I think that, um, you know, a specific date of the month, a day of the month with a specific time that is continuous, um, will, will get us to our goal. I don't know how people feel about that at all.
I, I absolutely, you know, because six months has not, like, I don't know why we didn't meet, but the six months, a lot we could have done in six months and it, and time just goes by. And I wanna contribute, I wanna help, I need the momentum to keep going. And like, thank you, Tom, for saying, what can we do to keep going? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, Donna. I, I don't know if I can do nine AM on Fridays when we're meeting as a board. Shut up. Between the regular board meeting and the reports I have to do for the board meeting, another meeting around the board meeting is just a little problematic for me. Uh, I'm, I'm exhausted. I don't know how much, I don't know how, how good I'd be.
You do a lot, Tom, and I appreciate what you do. I just, um, you know, because we're there already, but if we could schedule something once a month, like the second Wednesday, you know, I'm just making that up, um, and whether we meet or not, but put it on our schedule. That's, you know, what I'm suggesting. But, okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
That is good. And I, I, what I've tried to do in the other committees is try to get it, you know, well before the board meeting, so staff has an opportunity to edit and draft and, and modify documents for the board's review. So having it a little bit further in front of the board meeting gives everybody an opportunity to perfect what we're gonna present to the board.
So would anybody disagree with the second Wednesday of the month? Which would be the Wednesday before the board meeting on Friday?
Yeah, the, the only thing is that might end up running you two days before a board meeting. And I think just like, my comment was the same as Tom's, you wanna give a little bit of leeway for the staff to be able to prepare and then distribute material ahead of a board meeting. So if it was the third Wednesday, we'd be coming up right after the the board meeting, um, but that would give about a month then for the staff to, uh, make any edits that we want and then we could be prepared to elevate at the following board meeting, if that makes sense.
Perfect. Anybody have a problem with that recommendation of the third Wednesday of the month?
I don't. I don't, I don't think I have a conflict.
And then obviously, ten AM work for everyone. We can make it earlier or later, however, I wake up at four-thirty every day, so it doesn't matter to me. Nighttime for me is the problem, but, uh, mornings are no problem for me.
The third Wednesday?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that? The third Wednesday of every month?
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at the statute and regulations committee. You know, I think we're trying to meet the third Wednesday of every month at, at nine o'clock.
So it'll be back-to-back?
Uh, you know, we couldn't go at ten. Uh, the, the regulations committee is at least, yeah, it's, it's at least an hour and a half. Yeah, so eleven o'clock would be, would be better. Shit, that, that's gonna kill my whole morning.
Would you prefer it, I, I, you know, as a person who has unwittingly suffered back-to-back meetings, would you have preferred to do it, say, at one o'clock?
Are you trying to get my afternoon too?
Yeah.
I already sacrificed my morning. Um, yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could, um, it's better to.
Could we do earlier on Wednesday? Oh, no, that's right, we're starting at nine on Wednesday.
We're starting at nine, yeah, we start at nine.
It's, it's easier for me to do them back-to-back since I have to take off time from work. Um, so it's easier than, you know, being in and out of the day.
Yeah, yeah, no, let's, let's go with eleven.
Eleven o'clock.
We got a chance to shift gears. Yeah. Yeah.
So the training, so was that the training, that's the, at nine, and then the audit at eleven?
Regulation, I believe.
There was a statute, statute.
Statute, regulations, policies and procedures.
Yeah, statutes, right.
So they're both on a third Wednesdays?
Yeah, right now. I mean, it's coming up.
We just wanna make sure we get that noted for, um,
I just haven't seen it. Yeah, I haven't seen it on the calendar, and, you know, that's, this is kind of a special month with how many Wednesdays we have in the month. It actually turns out to be the fourth Wednesday, but in most months, it's the third Wednesday.
Yep.
Tommy, now that I have you at the end, and you're talking about meetings, at the end, hold on for a second, because you have a meeting to choose for me, too.
Yeah, thank you. You caught me. I didn't know you were gonna be in this meeting.
You were trying to run away, and I, I said, I, this is my opportunity, so I won't say anything else. I see you later.
Yeah, I, I have commitment issues. All right.
Okay, well, I'm glad that was settled. It'll be easier, much easier for, for planning purposes, uh, moving forward. Um, I think that new ideas for audits and stuff like that, we've, we've kind of tossed all that, um, in, around the, the wash today, so let's give ourselves some time to think about, um, again, the processes and getting to the end goal. Um, and everyone, you know, making sure it, uh, we come out with a quality and product. Um, other than that, anybody else have anything for the good order of the group?
Move to adjourn.
We have a moment to second it, and, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll let you know about the August meeting, um, but most likely, I think, uh, September, because I think I'm gonna be in surgery on August date. So, um, but you can have it without me, um, but we'll see. Have a great day, everybody, and enjoy.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, Carmen.
Yes, hi!
Hi, Carmen. All right, well, what was the, what were the date choices? You sent me a bunch, uh.
Yes, I don't remember. Do you remember, Alicia?
I don't think you copied me on that email that had the date proposals.
Yes, let me, let me take a quick.